We'll call this meeting, Town Council meeting, on April 11th to order. We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and Councilman Wolf will do our invitation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father God, thank you for bringing us here tonight to do your work, Lord, and just, Lord, ask you, thank you for our town, our community, Lord, our state and our nation, Lord. You give us many blessings, Lord, and just ask you, guide us tonight to do the work of our town, Lord. Lord, we love you and thank you and ask you forgive us for our sins. Amen.
Councilman, council, you have received the draft minutes for March 28th meeting, 2022. Any corrections, deletions, or additions?
None noted. I make a motion to accept as submitted.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Minute carried. Public comment pursuant to section 246 of the Code of Ordinance for the Town of Fort Mill. Any citizen of the Town of Fort Mill may appear before the council for the purpose of providing public comment of any municipal matter except personal matters. Those who wish to speak must sign in outside of the council chambers prior to the start of the meeting. Citizen will be given three minutes each to speak. Did we have anybody?
No, sir, we do not.
Moving on. Next business proclamation. For Town of Fort Mill proclamation for the mental health for children, and I'll read that. Whereas addressing the complex mental health needs of the children, youth, and families today and fundamental to the future of the Town of Fort Mill, South Carolina, and whereas the need of the comprehensive coordinated mental health services for the children, youth, youth adults, and families placed upon the community a critical responsibility, and whereas it is appropriate for the first Saturday in May to be set apart each year to raise awareness and direct our thoughts to our children's mental health and well-being, and whereas many of our community organizations through their unique approaches to the serving children, youth, adults, young adults, and youth adults with mental health or substance use disorders are effectively caring for the mental health needs of the children, youth, young adults, and their families in our community, and whereas the Town of Fort Mill, South Carolina, urges our citizens and all agencies and organizations within the town interested in meeting every child's mental health needs to unite on the day of observance of such exercises will be acquainted to the people of the Town of Fort Mill with the fundamental necessary of a year-round program for the children, youth, youth adults with mental health and substance use disorders and their families. Now therefore, it be it resolved that the Town of Fort Mill does hereby proclaim the day of May 7th, 2022, to be the Children's Mental Health Awareness Day. And I'll just present it to Robert White, and I'm not, I don't have your title, so...
I'm the Executive Director for NAMI Tri-County Piedmont.
Okay. We're very glad to partner with you.
Absolutely. Couldn't do it without you, my friend. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Just want to say thank you on behalf of NAMI Piedmont Tri-County. You know, we talk about mental health, you know, prior to COVID, prior to COVID, that's been two and a half years, prior to COVID, eighty-one percent of our young teenagers and young adults stated that mental health was an issue. Now we've got COVID, two years later, what are we going to do? So we definitely going to need your help, the community's help, York, Chester, and Lancaster County as well, and this is just one small step, and we appreciate you taking your time and your busy schedule to recognize, and look forward to working with you next month as well. Thank you.
Appreciate what you did. Thank you.
Moving on. Presentation number two, Hometown Recognition Ceremony, April 21st, Jocana Hester.
I'm presenting the Fort Mill Hometown Recognition Ceremony. This, this event will feature our Governor of South Carolina, the Honorable Henry McMaster, South Carolina House Representative, Ray Felder, and then of course, our Fort Mill Mayor, the Honorable Gwen Savage. This event is going to be held on Thursday, April 21st, at 4:30 PM at the Fort Mill's new amphitheater inside Walter Y. Elijah Park at 345 North White Street. Governor Henry McMaster and South Carolina House Representative, Ray Felder, will honor our hometown heroes and champions. Retired Fort Mill Police Chief Jeff Helms, who served the police department for twenty-seven years before retiring last year, will be presented with the Order of the Palmetto. The Order of the Palmetto is the State of South Carolina's highest civilian honor presented in recognition of a lifetime of extraordinary achievement, service, and contributions on a national or statewide scale. Local and county and state officials will be in attendance at this ceremony, and several outstanding student and sports groups will also be honored, including state and national champions from Nation Ford, Fort Mill, and Catawba Ridge High Schools. The Fort Mill All-Stars winners of the 2021 Dixie Youth Baseball World Series will also be honored for their outstanding accomplishments. And then we also have some additional recipients, which is Olivia Corby, a 4A girls' state swim championship and 200-yard freestyle state swim champion. Nation Ford High School band as 4A state champions. Nation Ford High School girls' swim team, 5A state swim team champions, 200-yard relay. The Nation Ford High School Marine Corps, JROTC, national champions. The Fort Mill High School band, they won the U.S. Band Southeastern States Championship. The Fort Mill High School cross-country team are the 5A state champions. The Catawba Ridge High School marching band are the 3A state champions. Catawba Ridge High School Sam Rich State Championship cross-country winners. Fort Mill All-Stars again for the Dixie Youth World Series champions, and of course, our own Fort Mill retired police chief Jeff Helms. Ceremony highlights will include Nation Ford High School and Fort Mill High School bands performing. The Nation Ford, MJROTC, will present the colors. The Honorable Governor Henry McMaster will present the awards, and then the Honorable South Carolina House Representative, Ray Felder, and the Honorable Mayor Gwen Savage will both speak at the event. And the town would just like to invite our community to come out and just support all of these local heroes and champions. We have so many people to be proud of and so proud of our community and the schools and individuals for all these wonderful things.
And we proud of all of them.
What a impressive list, and should, Fort Mill's a great place to be.
That's right. Anybody else? Presentation number three, Thirteenth Annual South Carolina Strawberry Festival, April 29th through May 7th, in Jocana Hester.
So the Town of Fort Mill is excited to announce its slate of events for the Thirteenth Annual South Carolina Strawberry Festival week. We're going to kick off our week on Friday, April, April 29th, and it will culminate in the return of our live festival on Friday and Saturday, May 6th and 7th, in Walter Elijah Park. We're going to kick off our week with our poster unveiling on Friday morning, April 29th, at 11:00 AM at the Fort Mill Amphitheater at Walter Elijah Park, and this event will feature our Town Council, Strawberry Queens, Berry, and our local artist Debbie Whitsett of Olive's Mud Puddle in downtown Fort Mill. She is this year's poster creator, and the posters can be purchased following the, following the event at Olive's Mud Puddle during the week. On Friday, April 29th, we're going to have our Little Miss Strawberry pageant at the Courtyard by Marriott and Kingsley. This event is at 7:00 PM. This is a ticketed event, and tickets are not available at the door, and we're going to be crowning our Tiny Miss Strawberry Shortcake, our Little Miss Strawberry Shortcake, Miss Strawberry Princess, and Miss Strawberry Festival Junior Teen, and Sesams and Sons is our crown sponsor for this event. Then our Teen Miss and Mrs. Pageant will take place on Saturday, April 30th, at 7:00 PM at the Courtyard by Marriott Kingsley, and it's the same thing. It's a ticketed event, tickets are not available at the door, and we're going to be crowning our Teen Miss and Mrs. Strawberry Queens, and Sesams and Sons is our crown sponsor for that as well. And then on Saturday morning, we have a great lineup of events, and we're going to start off our morning at eight, eight AM with our Strawberry Sprint and Stroll, and this is a new Fort Mill favorite returning for a second year as part of the festival, and this will, event will start on Main Street and end on Main Street, and then it will conclude with a Runners Village with local merchants, food trucks, music, and a festive atmosphere, and of course, Berry, our mascot, and our Strawberry Queens will be there, and that will just be a great morning. And then at 10:00 AM, the Fort Mill History Museum is hosting Strawberry Scavenger Hunt, and you'll pick up your hunt and your keepsake pin at the museum, you'll follow the clues around Fort Mill to learn about the history of downtown Fort Mill. You can email your answers back to the museum, or you can just return there and take a tour of the museum and just see what all the wonderful things they have to offer there, and they're going to be picking winners of all the correct answers to win prizes for that event, and that is 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Another event on that Saturday morning is our Strawberry Doggy Fashion Show. It will take place at Veterans Park at 106 North White Street, and we just want you to dress those doggies up in cute strawberry-themed attire, or you can also just dress them up. We're going to have them, is the cutest costume contest as well. All the participants will receive a special doggy treat, and it's just, it's just a great fun time seeing all of them dressed up and having fun with, with our fur babies. And then also, at the same time, we're going to be giving away free shaved ice from Kona Ice from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And at the same location, and we'll also have our Strawberry Festival backdrop up out there, Strawberry Queens will be there, and Berry, the mascot, will also be there. You can take pictures with them and use hashtag SCStrawberryFestival to post the pictures and enjoy a delicious strawberry snow cone. On Sunday, May 1st, we're having our Strawberry Festival brunch from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Ann Springs Close Greenways Gateway Canteen, and those tickets are available online now. You will buy tickets for a time slot, nine, 10, 11, or 12, and all that information is at scstrawberryfestival.com, and that is at the Lake Hagler entrance in Fort Mill, and you do have to have a ticket to get in there. So make sure you come out and enjoy the strawberry-themed brunch with a wonderful buffet of delicious food. On Monday, we're having our Strawberry Baby Photo Contest, and we are accepting entries for this right now, April 1st through the 30th, and we would like you to dress your babies up in strawberry attire or strawberry-themed picture. We had so many wonderful pictures last year, and they were just so adorable, and we hope we will have that again this year. All the entries will be posted to the South Carolina Strawberry Festival Facebook page on Monday, May 2nd, at 9:00 AM, and then voting is open until 5:00 PM, and then we will announce the winners at 6:00 PM that evening. And then we have the Strawberry Festival Golf Tournament, which is sold out right now. We have a couple of whole sponsorships available, but that is it. But this event is taking place at the Springfield Golf Course at 8:00 AM on Tuesday, May 3rd, with a 9:30 AM shotgun start, and we appreciate all of our sponsors for this event. On Wednesday, we have our Downtown Strawberry Jam from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM on Main and Confederate Streets in downtown Fort Mill, and we just want everyone to come out and enjoy an evening of music, food, vendors, downtown merchants, and kids' activities. The Tim Clark Band will be providing music for the evening. You can enjoy shopping and eating at our downtown merchants, but make sure you drop, stop by all the food trucks and our vendors and our organization booths as well. And then our kids' activities will include a DJ, face painting, balloon artists, and arts and crafts, and of course, you can join the Strawberry Queens and Berry for a photo op at our town tent and our Strawberry Festival backdrop. Then on Thursday morning, May 5th, we will announce the winners of our third annual Strawberry Idol Contest at 10:00 AM, and we are still accepting entries for that until, until April 15th, at 5:00 PM, and we are giving away prizes for that, and we have just a whole lot of talented people in our community, so we love hearing from them and seeing their entries. And then the main event, on Friday and Saturday, we will have the South Carolina Strawberry Festival in Walter Elijah Park. On May 6th, it will be from 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM, and then on May 7th, from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM. We'll kick off the festival with our opening ceremony at the Fort Mill Amphitheater at 5:00 PM, and this will feature our Town Council, town staff, our Strawberry Queens, our Strawberry Committee, Berry, our Queens, local officials, and we'll have music by a local school. We have a dance group that will be performing, and we're going to have some giveaways and just a lot of fun as we kick off the evening. This is our map of this year's festival. We have almost 200 vendors with food, arts and crafts, kids' activities, businesses, sponsors, nonprofits, and more. It's going to be an exciting time. Our music lineup, we will, of course, kick off Friday evening with the opening ceremony, and then the Strawberry Idol Showcase will be at 5:30, and that will feature last year's winners, so that's going to be exciting to hear them in person this year. Then at 6:30 is the Ryan Perry Band, at 8:00 PM, Carolina Rhythm Band, and at 9:30, The Stranger, which is a Billy Joel tribute. And then on Saturday, from 10:00 to 10:00, we kick off the morning with the Fort Mill's local elementary schools. At 11:00 AM, we'll have the Fort Mill Church of God. 12:30, Push Two, the Kyle Dills Band. 3:30, Ace Party Band. 5:00 PM, Groove Machine. 6:30, Kids in America. And then in the evening at 8:15 with a Boy Band Review, which is a Boy Band tribute. And here is a few pictures of them. And then additional activities going on during the festival. We have DJ Brown Sound, he'll be in the Fun Zone from 5:00 to 11:00. We have wrestling matches at 6:00 PM and 8:00 PM on Friday. Rides from 5:00 to 11:00, and of course, vendors and food trucks from 5:00 to 11:00. And you can meet and greet Berry and our newly crowned Strawberry Queens in the Family Trust Fun Zone tent from 6:00 to 7:00 on Friday evening. And on Saturday, from 10:00 to 10:00, we have DJ Brown Sound in the Fun Zone from 10:00 to 9:45. We have Riving Entertainment from 10:30 to 4:30. We have stage shows in the Family Trust Fun Zone tent at 10:00 AM, 11:30 AM, and 4:00 PM. Eating contests in the Fun Zone tent from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. We have our car show going on on North White Street from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Pig races at various times throughout the day. Wrestling at 12:00, 3:00, 5:00, and 8:00 PM, and then of course, our rides, vendors, and food trucks from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And then we'll end our evening with a wonderful fireworks show at 9:45 PM. We will have beer, wine, and cider sales at the festival. On Friday, and the ID checks and tickets and wristbands will go on sale at 4:00 PM with serving time from 5:00 to 10:30, and then on Saturday, the ID checks, tickets, and wristbands will begin at 2:30 with serving time from 5:00 to 9:30. And it's our price list for this year, and the Fort Mill History Museum will be serving and doing the tickets and alcohol sales this year. Our festival parking and our shuttles, we have public parking lots, we have Nation Ford High School, and we have Fort Mill High School, and then we have our downtown lots, which is St. John's United Methodist Church, First Baptist, and Fort Mill Church of God, and the Fort Mill Church of the Nazarene, and Ann Springs Close Greenway Horse Lot. And of course, we have shuttles coming from Nation Ford, Fort Mill High, and the downtown lots, Fort Mill Church of the Nazarene, and Ann Springs Close Greenway, those are in walking distance, so you can walk from there. And then our handicapped lots will be St. John's United Methodist Church and First Baptist. The shuttles that pick up at those locations are handicapped accessible. And then, of course, we have our festival rules and details. We want everyone to bring a chair or blanket so they can hang out and enjoy the festival. No coolers, no outside food, no outside drinks or alcohol, no golf carts or bicycles or pets, except service animals, no weapons, smoking, profanity, firearms, or bicycles allowed. And then this is all of our wonderful sponsors for this year's festival. We love that they like to partner with us on the festival, and we just appreciate all they do to help make our festival even better. And our event host partners this year, Fort Mill Economic Partners, the Gateway Canteen, Ann Springs Close Greenway, the History Museum, Springfield Golf Club, and then the Courtyard by Marriott. And of course, where to get your delicious strawberries, you can get them at Springs Farm at 1010 Springfield Parkway, or the Peach Stand at 1325 Highway 160 East, I meant West, and then they're also available at the festival. We will have those at a couple of entrances, and then also, the Peach Stand will be set up at the festival selling them. And for complete details about the full week of events, of course, go to scstrawberryfestival.com, follow Town of Fort Mill and the South Carolina Strawberry Festival on Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter. This is our wonderful list of festival committee members this year, and we just thank them for all of their assistance in helping to coordinate this year's festival and just for all that they do to make it happen. They're just a wonderful group of people, and we just are so thankful for them. So we are seeking a resolution for designating the sites of a public festival for the Strawberry Sprint and Stroll, the Downtown Strawberry Jam, and the South Carolina Strawberry Festival at which alcoholic beverages may be consumed, and to authorize special event permits for live music, sound, amplifying equipment, and fireworks. And we are just very excited to present this slate of events, and we are looking forward to welcoming everyone back to this year's festival. We can't wait to see everyone.
Yeah, we're very excited to have a full schedule this year, over the last two years, and thank you, Jocana, and your committee for all the hard work y'all do.
Thank you, and thank you for wearing your shirt in honor of tonight.
Yeah, it's a very impressive event y'all put together, so a lot of work was put into that, and you thank all the people and to do all the behind-the-scenes work. So just, so I know the website, so that was a lot you covered, but for the people that are looking for it, so can they go to the town site? Is there a link to that, or they need to go to the Strawberry Festival site?
Yes, you can go to fortmillsc.gov, there is a link from there, or you can go straight to the festival website, which is scstrawberryfestival.com.
Great. And I'm sure our social media genius will be posting it all the appropriately places too, so, but that's a pretty wide schedule to keep around.
Right, it is. I just think, go ahead. I was going to say, Jocana, just want to commend you on all the, all the work you put into this. I know the logistics and go into just organizing a event, more or less, all the events that you guys have put together, so I know you've been working on this for months, and this is your baby, so this is, this is going to be awesome. It's going to be awesome to have the festival back.
Well, thank you. We can't do it without our wonderful team and our wonderful town staff.
I think it's exciting to see how literally little kids, all the way up to grown and retired at all ages, there's something to do, there's good food and good activities, the bands, and, you know, I tell you, that's something I really, really look forward to every year is bringing a chair out and just hanging out, watching the bands, and see people you went to school with, or see friends, new friends, old friends, things like that, so just really excited to see it back. And remind everybody, if they think just one little thing of strawberries is enough, they probably should get two.
Four.
Yeah. And I think...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on, the old business item, number one, public hearing and ordinance amending the zoning ordinance for the Town of Fort Mill, Article II, requirements by district, Section 24 COD, COD in Carter Overlay District Subsection 12, signed so as to delete poll signs, Article III, signed so as to amend the requirements for temporary signage and to delete poll signage, Article IV, administration enforcement penalties and fees subsection so as to amend the consecutive day limit as to reflect changes made in Article III, and to provide other materials related thereto. This is a public hearing, public hearing is now open. Public hearing is now closed. Do I need to read that again for second reading?
We're going to make a motion.
I don't have any comments.
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve the second reading of the ordinance.
I'll second that.
All approve?
Aye.
All oppose?
Thank you.
Thank you, Penelope. I know you put a lot of work into this stuff, so I have to go through it real quickly, but that's, and it helps clean up some stuff. I actually read it another time, so it's good job.
We're excited, and I thank my staff, my planning staff, for doing a really good job looking at other places to do this tax amendment, and we will be given a copy to the code enforcer tomorrow, Chris Ray, so he'll have a new document to enforce.
Great.
That's one of those things I feel like we've read, and we've studied it, and we've talked about it, and we've vetted it out, so what we're yielding here is a great solution and be great for the town too, so proud of that.
Thank you.
Also helps with the, keep some of the trash off the side of the road when signs are put up and then never cleaned, removed, so that's...
Then they get run over.
Then they get, then they get mowed, and yeah, then they become a permanent structure, so, yeah, so, great.
Thank you very much. New business item, new business item number one, a resolution designating the site of a public festival, Strawberry Sprint and Stroll, 5K Downtown Strawberry Jam, and the South Carolina Strawberry Festival at which alcoholic beverage may be consumed and to authorize special event permits for live music, sound, and amplifying equipment and fireworks. I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All those, all those approved?
Aye.
All those opposed? New business item number two, first reading of an ordinance amending ordinance number 2021-22 so as to change the effective date of rezoning of the York County Tax Maps, number 0201701064, and 02017-01-065 from PND, Planned Neighborhood Development to MXU, Mixed Use Development, Chris Pettit.
Members of council, if you recall, back in September of 2021, council approved the Crossroads Development. With those, there were three approvals, well, there were four approvals, but three of the approvals had sunset provisions, meaning that if the developer, which is Crossroads Development Partners LLC, did not take ownership of the property within 240 days of the date of approval, that the ordinances were null and void. And as with anything these days, things take more time and cost more money than they used to do, so the developers come back and is asking for an extension on those three ordinances. So this first item here is for an extension of the sunset provision of the original rezoning ordinance to extend it from that original 240 days to 480 days from September 13th, 2021. Otherwise, there's no changes in what's being asked for, or what's being promised or negotiated, it's just simply an extension of that sunset provision. Happy answering questions.
Chris, would we, has this come before, we would have to do another extension? I know we're hoping we wouldn't, but is that, is that why we've extended, doubled the time period?
Yeah, I mean, certainly the hope would be that you wouldn't have to do another extension by doing it.
Is there a limit on the number of extensions? I just, by statute, if there was... I'd statute if there was whatever. So, I mean, I totally understand, uh, you go to a restaurant nowadays and it takes twice as long because they don't have the staff and it's just a new world we live in. So I totally understand it.
We're, we're quickly progressing through, I, I think, most of the items that, um, the developer is, is wanting to have done before, uh, taking ownership of the property. So I, I feel confident in 240 more days.
Well, I hope you would say so as well.
So, uh, so 240.
That was a positive nod. So, good.
So do we need to do these one at a time or?
Um, yes, I think they need to be read all.
I mean, I'll read them, but do we need to vote on them all at?
Well, I, I'll go ahead and tell you, the, my presentation is the exact same for all three of them. This first one is for the rezoning. The second one is for the development agreement. And the third one is for, um, the annexation. So, um, I don't have anything else to say new for the other two, but, uh, they need to be voted on.
Okay, we've got four.
Um, I've got new business item number two, three, and four.
Okay. So do we need to vote on the first one?
Mr. Helms.
Item number one.
Yes, sir. I would do one at a time. One each.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept, uh, modification as submitted.
I'll second.
All those approve?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. New business item number three, first reading of an ordinance amending ordinance number 2021-24 so as to change the effective date of the ordinance to authorize the entry to, by the Town of Fort Mill into the development agreement with Crossroads Development Partners LLC, a North Carolina limited liability company, J. Maxx Henson LLC, Max Henson Jr., J. Maxx Henson III, Marshall O'Dell Henson, J. Maxx Henson Jr. as custodian for, uh, Adam, Jason Henson, Raymond Lee Sarr, Christie Lee Sarr, Lanale Simmons Bailey, Judith Alicia Kimbrel, James Wayne Lancaster, Ronald Allen Vogel, John W. May Senior, Brenda B. Tolleson, and Ronald H. Bailey, Christopher Robert Blanton, Bonnie James Blanton, Kenneth Duane Blanton, Thomas G. Hare, where properties located at York County Tax Map Number 020-17-01-064, 020-17-01-065, 738-00-00-059, portions of 738-00-00-094, 738-00-00-077, and 738-00-00-046, and authorizing execution and delivery of amended amendment, agreement. Okay.
Can you read that again?
Can you clarify that?
I'll make a motion to accept, uh, new business item number three.
Chris, do you want to make any notes for the record?
Again, this is just extending from 240 days to 480 days for that development agreement.
Great. I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Get my pages together here. New business item number four, first reading of an ordinance, amending ordinance number zero, uh, 2021-25 so as to change the effective date for the annexation of York County Tax Map Number 738-00-00-059, portions of 738-00-00-094, 738-00-00-077, and 738-00-00-046 containing approximately 36.71 plus or minus acres located on Fort Mill Parkway and off of Hare Road. Motion.
Mr. Pettit?
Again, no, no changes except, um, just extending that sunset provision from 240 days to 480 days.
I'll make a motion to accept.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, let me.
Would you like a drink of water?
No, I need something. I need some new eyeballs. Uh, let's get down here to where I need to be. Yeah. Ad hoc committee, uh, being the chairman. Recommendation from the ad hoc committee. Uh, first committee is the committee recommended, uh, for the Board of Zoning Appeals. Seat number three recommended appoint, reappointment of Jody Stegall to serve as a new three-year term for seat three, which will expire on April the 12th, 2025. Seat number four recommended reappointing Carol Blair to serve as a new three-year term for seat four, which will expire on April the 12th, 2025. Seat five recommended reappointment of, uh, that's the only one, that's.
Yeah, there's only two we're gonna do tonight.
That's the recommendation of the ad hoc committee. So I need a motion and a second to approve.
I'll make a motion to, uh, accept those two nominations to extend their, uh, they're currently on serving now, right? Yeah. To reappoint, I guess is the right word.
Yeah, reappoint. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Next one is the Historic Review Board. Seat number three recommended reappointing of Scott Cockenhauer to serve a new three-year term for seat three, which will expire on April the 12th, 2025. Seat four recommended reappointing Jessica Scarlett, Scarlett to serve on a new three-year term of seat four, which will expire on 12th, April the 12th, 2025. Seat five recommended reappointment Megan Brenton to serve a new three-year term on seat five, which will expire on April the 12th, 2025. And seat six recommended appointing Nikki Toadaro to serve as rec, uh, remainder of the term of seat seven, which expires on April the 24th, 2023. Motion.
I'll make a motion to accept.
I'll, I'll second.
All those approve?
Aye.
All those.
You said all for?
Four. All the, yeah, that. Okay, let's see. Planning Commission, seat three recommended reappointing Jason, or appointing Jason Thurl to serve a new three-year term for seat three, which will expire on April the 12th, 2025. Seat four recommended reappointing Dan Stout to serve a new three-year term for seat four, which will expire on April the 12th, 2025. And seat five recommend reappointing Mark Kerr to serve a new three-year term for seat five, which will expire on April the 12th, 2025. And that's recommendations for the ad hoc committee.
I make a motion to accept.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And those are the appointments for the ad hoc committee. There's no information for discussion. There's no executive sessions, so it's all been, been good for the whole.
Just listening to her talk about the Strawberry Festival, just extremely excited to see it all come around, the, the way we can spread so much throughout the week and have it be for all the ages, the, you know, the eating contest, the brunch and things like that. It's, you know, it's growing, but I think it's growing in a great way from the town is, uh, the way they're keeping away the Jocana and everybody there is orchestrated all this. I know we've said it over and over, but it's still just, uh, it's exciting for me. That's, that's good, small town. That's what it's all about when people move in this area. They talk about, you know, what is there to do in Fort Mill? What is, they love charm a fault, small town. And this is, you know, this exemplifies that.
Now, see, you signed up to do that run?
I'm not gonna run. I stroll. I'm not gonna run. I might sprint if there's strawberries on the other end.
Alan? Uh, just, uh, this, uh, last Saturday, we had second Saturday of service. Uh, Mr. Brum, I want to commend you for putting that on. It was fantastic. I know my group personally on, on Brickyard Road, we collected 15 bags of trash, four tires. Uh, we found a Pepsi bottle from 1965 too, buried, buried in the ditch. So I'll, I'll, I'll send a picture of that. But, uh, that was awesome. We had tons. How many people do we have total?
I think we had.
Forty-five.
That was awesome. That was incredible. And Church of God brought a huge group of people there. Uh, Pastor Stefan, um, had a bed up there, but that was fantastic. Seeing people all over town, seeing those orange bags of trash everywhere, that's, that's really cool to see. And then with, with, uh, again, on the Strawberry Festival, that's, it's, it's amazing to see it back, how it, how it's supposed to be.
Seeing somebody posted, found some cell phones.
I found some. A smoke detector, a fuzzy slipper, two cell phones.
So I know what your kids are getting for Christmas.
That's right.
So, no, I think Strawberry Festival is gonna be an outstanding event. It's gonna be, that's a lot of pinup demand. Uh, we had the Dino Adventures the other week and, and the town was inundated. So I think, uh, I think the people are ready to get back out and enjoy, uh, the events that they've missed the last couple of years. So, uh, looking forward to it. So I think it's, it's, now we just hope the weather holds and the strawberries don't run out and we'll be good to go.
I'll say the same thing. Looking forward to the Strawberry Festival, even though it gets very busy on my street. Uh, appreciate everybody putting up with me tonight, trying to wing my way through this.
Excellent job.
Uh, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Get to gavel. You gotta, you gotta gavel. We'll gavel it down.